Hello there, and thank you for tuning into Town Meeting TV's ongoing coverage of Town Meeting Day 2025. My name is Bobby Lucier. This program is part of a series of candidate forums hosted by Town Meeting TV in advance of the Town Meeting Day election this year on Tuesday, March 4th. These forums are made possible by Town Meeting TV's generous underwriters. Thank you so much to those folks. You can find all of our forums at cctv.org/tmd2025 or on our Town Meeting TV YouTube channel where auto-generated captions are available. And if you're tuning in on YouTube, we do ask that you subscribe to our channels to stay tuned into local democracy this election season. On tonight's program, we will hear from two candidates running for South Burlington City Council. Those candidates are Elizabeth Fitzgerald, the incumbent candidate, and Lydia Diamond. Thank you both so much for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And so we've prepared a list of questions for both of you, and you'll each have 90 seconds to answer each question roughly. Rebuttal will be allowed. If one of you names the other, then we'll give you 30 seconds to respond. And if you are tuning in live, we welcome your questions at 802-862-3966. You can call in, and we will do our best to prioritize your question. We do ask, though, that your question be directed to both of the candidates here tonight, not just one in particular, and we'll also make sure that questions are not repeated. We ask that you share your name, the town you live in, and you can submit questions also for future forums online at cctv.org/tmd2025. All right, so let's get started with one-minute opening statements. Just hear a little bit about why you love South Burlington and why you want to serve as a city councillor, or in your case, Elizabeth Fitzgerald, to continue to serve as city councillor. One-minute opening statement, you can get started.
Thank you very much, Bobby. Yes, I've been a resident of South Burlington for over 21 years. I actually grew up in Winuski, Vermont, with my siblings, seven siblings, and I moved back to, after college and a career outside of Vermont, I moved back to Vermont with my two children largely for the school district and was very happy to participate in the public school system. I served on our South Burlington School Board for 15 years, many of those in the capacity of chair, and I made a decision after I'd been out of public service for about three or four years that I really had an interest in rounding out my volunteer experience as well as a better understanding of what the city's needs were, particularly as we were growing and changing and new laws were coming into effect, to really look at keeping the welcoming neighborhoods of South Burlington, but also while recognizing that growing was going to be part of our future. So I'm really excited to serve on the council. I've spent the last year working very hard to get up to speed and really understand the nuances of sitting on council. We're very fortunate in South Burlington to have a seasoned city manager and an incredibly talented staff, so I am looking to contribute to those efforts. I also serve with four other members on council who bring incredible experiences and wisdom to the role, and I hope that I can round that team out.
Great, thank you so much. Lydia Diamond, your opening statement, and we'll say 90 seconds actually for this because Elizabeth went a little bit over there. So 90 seconds, what do you love about South Burlington and why do you want to serve as city councillor?
My name is Lydia Diamond. I've been a Vermont resident for 30 years. I spent 12 years in Burlington, and two of those years I spent on the Burlington School Board. And then I moved to South Burlington in 2006. So it's been almost 19 years that I've been a resident. I'm a tenant. I'm not a homeowner. I've been paying my rent on time, and I don't see representation for me on the South Burlington City Council. And I learned a couple of years ago that the South Burlington City Council has never had a person of color step up and run. And in order to comply with diversity, equity, and inclusion, you need to embrace the people that look like me. We need representation on the South Burlington City Council. It doesn't exist. So this is why I stepped up, because I want to win, Elizabeth. I recently, you know, watched January 13th episode of the City Council for South Burlington, and it said, "There are 21,000 residents in the city." Well, I want reparations in the form of votes. That means 21,000 votes. I love South Burlington too, but I want to represent the Black Indigenous people of color. They don't have representation.
Thank you so much, Lydia. We'll move on now to the city budget. Talk a little bit about the proposed city budget. So question here, and we'll start with you, Lydia. Do you support the proposed city budget of $55.9 million with an estimated 3.3% increase in taxes? And are there any aspects of the city budget that you would have liked to see changed? So that first question for you, Lydia, do you support the budget, and is there anything that you would have changed about it?
Well, at this point, I don't have an option not to support the budget, but what I would like to see is how much of that budget supports BIPOC, community residents, children, New Americans. How much is going towards helping others in the community that are not represented? That I don't see in the budget, but I would like to, because the BIPOC people of South Burlington work very hard to be included in everything, but they don't feel seen and they don't feel heard. They feel small, and I want them to know that's why I'm running, to represent them.
Thank you so much.
Although there is no money in the budget for it. Baby!
Thank you, Lydia. Elizabeth Fitzgerald, your thoughts on the city budget? Do you support it, and is there anything you would like to see changed?
I do support the budget. It does represent a tax increase of 3.3%, which is a pretty modest increase on individuals' bills. And Lydia, you do participate in the budget. As a renter, as a homeowner, you will feel aspects of the budget from that standpoint. So one of the things I think that's important is the city council did take into account the tax burden on our shared taxpayer when we looked at what was going to be happening with the school budget. And I think what you see reflected, I hope what our community sees reflected in the city's budget, is really a responsible and a budget that preserves a lot of the high-quality services and the current level of services that are provided to South Burlington residents. But it does leave a lot out in the budget, and those are things that we're going to be talking about a lot this year. It leaves out options of a recreation center, it leaves out a City Green in our new market center downtown, it leaves out a number of implementation plans associated with master plans that we've asked committee members and community members to step forward and present to council in the future, including active transportation, economic development, and our master plan for open space and recreation spaces. So we have a lot of work to do, and we hope the community will support the budget in front of them.
Thank you. Yeah, Lydia, would you like to take a second to respond?
I just wanted to respond that I live on Social Security disability. I live below the poverty level, and every year my rent goes up, but not every year does the COLA go up. Everything else go up except for my Social Security disability. And it's scary, because I look ahead and I'm like, God, I don't want to be homeless again, not never again in life. So I need the South Burlington City Council to take that into consideration.
Thank you so much, Lydia. We're now going to move on to the school budget, and I think with this one, we'll start with Elizabeth. So do you support this year's school budget, $71.5 million? It's nearly level funded from last year and an associated tax rate increase of 7.9% estimated. And follow-up, how would you address the challenges facing the state's education fund and the way that we fund our local schools?
Yeah, this is a tough one, because this really gets at the heart of a burden on our taxpayer, and particularly taxpayers with fixed income, including renters, homeowners, and students of voting age as well. This is a tough budget. I am going to support this budget largely because I understand why we are here, and I don't want our students to suffer. I don't want more of the programs that have been cut in this budget to be impacted, but it is a tough budget. The school board was put in an awkward situation last year to use two years of surplus to fund the budget last year after it failed twice. And between, I'm sure the legislature did not intend with Act 127 for districts that could benefit from a redistribution of the general ed fund, that others might be penalized in some way. And I believe that that is really what has happened in South Burlington and other largely Chittenden County communities. So I am going to support it, but there are many aspects that I believe need to be changed for general ed funding of public education.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Lydia, your thoughts on the school budget?
Well, the school budget is huge. It's a big number, and I would love to know if there's money in that budget for mental health care for our children. Is there money in that budget for racial harassment in our schools? Because it's also huge, and there's no real addressing it. Children need to learn what good behavior is, and they need to learn to practice it. Bullying is unacceptable. I don't care whose child you are, because some adults think that bullying is okay, and I'm against it. So how much of the school budget goes toward helping our children with those particular items that are important to our BIPOC community?
Thank you both so much. That is a tough issue this year. School funding is a real challenge in many towns across Vermont. We'll now move on to addiction and the opioid crisis. Where do you differ from other candidates running for South Burlington City Council this year in your proposed approach to the opioid crisis? And what are the most important initiatives that South Burlington can undertake to address this crisis? And we'll start with you, Lydia.
Well, first of all, I don't think South Burlington does enough, first of all. Now Burlington is busy always trying to get it done, even when they doing it wrong, they doing something. Now, I came here, no, my family, my mother, may she rest in peace, brought me and my four children to the state of Vermont the summer of 1994 because I was addicted to crack cocaine and knocking on death's door, and she wanted to save our lives. So that's how I came to Vermont, and I did not like Vermont. I thought it was too cold, too white, and too quiet. But here I am, still standing strong, sober as hell, and 30 years later, I'm so proud because I'm always busy making my ancestors proud, and I'm proud to have seven grandchildren born at U of M. That's a complete legacy of mine. I'm very proud of. So when you see me open my mouth, that's who I'm speaking for. That's the representation that I need folks to see and hear. It's my truth, and I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Like it or love it, like me or love me, or just leave me alone. I still got plenty of work to do.
Thank you so much, Lydia. Appreciate that. Elizabeth, your thoughts on addiction, the opioid crisis, and what South Burlington can do to address that crisis?
First off, congratulations, Lydia. You deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you. It was not easy, trust me.
You know, South Burlington, one of the things that's funded in this year's budget is for the Community Justice Center and Restorative Justice, and that, two programs, the state funding was redeployed. We're waiting to hear still if that funding is going to come through to South Burlington, but in the meantime, this council made a decision to fund that through the operating budget this year. That includes also outreach from the Howard Center, so we partner with the Howard Center to outreach to some of our more vulnerable citizens that need support with addiction and the opioid crisis. One of the things, I serve as council liaison to the Housing Committee, which is a combination now of our Housing Trust and Affordable Housing Committee, and one of the tenants of that group is kind of a housing-first tenant. And it's really saying, can people really be available for treatment options and for other services until they have a stable residence of some kind? So I'm looking forward to continuing the work with the Housing Committee, and I really believe the addiction process really needs to be a holistic approach that relies on economic development, housing, and then all the wraparound services that are available through Howard and through things like our Restorative Justice Center.
Thank you both so much. Lydia, I'll give you maybe just a quick second.
I just want to say that we need more than the Howard Center because of its history, and it's not a good history. I personally have kept my distance because of the history of the Howard Center, but there are other means that could be used, so.
Thanks, Lydia. Do you want to add anything there on that point?
You know, just a quick comment. When I served on the school board was when the Chittenden Clinic was opening on Dorset Street, and I had a lot of concerns about the location of the clinic so close to schools. And I have to say, you know, my concerns were allayed not only in the school leadership's partnering with folks from the Chittenden Clinic, but also the fact that it represented a service that was on bus lines and available to a lot of South Burlington and other residents. So I'm very proud of that within South Burlington as well.
Thank you both so much for your thoughts on that. And I will remind folks that if you're tuning in, you can call in, 802-862-3966, with your questions for the candidates. We have about a little bit less than 15 minutes left here, but we'll keep on with the questions that we have prepared until we hear from you. So our next question here is about development in South Burlington. What is an example of development in the city that you're proud of, and what role should the city council play in guiding new development across the city? And we'll start with Elizabeth on this one.
Great, thank you. You know, City Center has been a big project. It's within the TIF district of South Burlington, and we're probably about halfway through on that project from the TIF standpoint. And that is an area that the community made a big commitment when they authorized the council previously and asked for funding for that. So that is an area that is a work in progress, but one that I think can really help redefine culture within South Burlington. The bike ped paths, to me, are a real hallmark of South Burlington, the connectivity they provide is really, is something I hear very often of why people enjoy being in South Burlington. And lastly, an area, it doesn't really fall into the development category, but when you invest in development, you also have to be very aware of providing for maintenance of that. And one of the things, you know, one of the biggest complaints and also one of the greatest compliments we often get are preserving our roads and our bike and ped paths and a lot of the infrastructure associated with keeping the city moving, water, sewer, and stormwater as well.
Great, thank you so much, Elizabeth. Lydia, your thoughts on development in South Burlington?
Well, the first thing that I want to say is I've been going to prayer at the Islamic Society of Vermont in South Burlington, and it has been wonderful to connect hands-on with folks who are BIPOC and folks who are Muslim, children, beautiful, and connect with folks who are New Americans. And I realized that Burlington gave the Muslim community something like 60 plots to bury their dead. And as far as development is concerned, I'd like to see South Burlington match that, because these people deserve to have somewhere to bury their dead, you know, and they have a different way. It was really beautiful to learn the details of how they bury their dead. It was a workshop. It was phenomenal, and I truly enjoy learning new things. And so as far as development is concerned, I'd like to see that. But I'd also like to see a multicultural center for BIPOC children to play, for mothers to bring their children to learn. I've lived on Limekill Road almost, April will make 19 years. My grandchildren have never had a safe place to play, and that needs to change. It just really needs to change in South Burlington.
Thank you both so much for your thoughts on development. We'll now move on to a question about climate change. So the city recently hired a climate manager to assist in overseeing climate action throughout all city initiatives. Question is, what will you do as city councillor to pursue the city's climate goals? I'm going to start with you, Lydia.
Well, the first thing I want to do is say that climate change should be climate crisis, because Marvin Gaye's album, What's Going On?, there's a song on it, "Mercy, mercy me, all things ain't what they used to be," and it speaks to climate crisis. And this is over 40, 50 years ago. So I want folks to pay attention, listen, because you might learn something. Now I'm going to be quiet.
Thank you, Lydia. Elizabeth, your thoughts on the city's approach to climate change?
Yeah, climate resiliency is something we should all be focusing on. I was very pleased when I came on to council that the hard work had been done by previous council to really develop what is called the 2025 City Plan. And within that, there is a statement at the start of that, that we will look at policies and practices within the city through the lens of climate resiliency, and I believe in that. And I also believe that City Plan is the roadmap through which we will do our work. We have a very robust climate action plan, and I really appreciate the work that's gone into that. That also serves as kind of a template off of which we will do the city's work. I just read an article or commentary in Vermont Digger by Katie Gallagher today, actually, who's the Sustainable Communities Program Director for the Vermont Natural Resources Council. And one of the things she said which resonates with me, and is sort of the hard work that we do, is really trying not to succumb to a zero-sum game when it comes to big issues like climate, like public safety, like economic development, like housing, like affordability. And one of the roles, I think, of the city council is to really bring all those needs to bear in the decisions that get made every day, and again, keep an eye on the prize in terms of directional improvement, but also balance the needs as they come up and present themselves to all our residents.
Great, thank you both so much. Lydia?
I know, I know.
We've got a couple of questions left.
I just want to make sure that the audience knows I'm not knocking any of the work that's been done. In fact, I thank you. I love the work that has been done, and I want to continue that work, because we only get one planet, so we got to do better.
Great, thank you so much, Lydia. We'll now start with you, Lydia, on this next question, which is about language access. Data from the American Community Survey shows that at least 4% of South Burlington's population, or about 800 residents, speak little-to-know English. So how can the city meet the language access needs of its residents? Start with you, Lydia.
Well, on February 3rd, at the South Burlington City Council meeting, the city manager, Jesse Baker, used an offensive term, and I had to call her on it, because that is a language that should never be used. Now, she used the term "lynch pen," and the lynch triggered me. And I just want to put that out there, that when you talk about language access, you need to be culturally competent. Did that answer your question?
Thank you, Lydia. As far as, I mean, as far as the folks that speak little-to-know English and making sure that they have what they need or getting the information that they need, do you have thoughts on how the city should be addressing their needs?
Well, they should have a committee of the translators in our neighborhood, in our community, because there are a lot of them, but they are not embraced in South Burlington, and that needs to change. Because in order to get them to step up and help with that, you have to show them that you appreciate what they bring to the table, including language access, because there are lots of translators. But South Burlington has yet to embrace that particular part of the community, and I can help with that. Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much, Lydia. Elizabeth, your thoughts on language access and how the city can accomplish those goals?
I have a recent perspective on this in that one of the other committees, and I'll talk more about this later, but one of the committees I serve as council liaison to is also the City Charter Committee, who has been charged fairly recently with evaluating and making recommendations to council on all resident voting. So I just participated last week in a committee meeting that there was a discussion with Burlington representatives, Winuski and Montpelier representatives, really around what it means from both an equity and a logistics standpoint to look at all resident voting, and language access is a big component of that. So it was informational to me and educational around what some of our sister cities are doing around translating ballots, around providing real-time translation, and accessing a service that's sort of a phone-in, a dial-in service that becomes a three-party call when you're at the polls. So I think those are great examples of how we can improve language access, and I also think our school system is a really good barometer of what our expectations should be for new languages that may become future residents of South Burlington.
Thank you both so much, and thank you for your time this evening. We've got time for maybe 30, 45 seconds each for just a closing statement, something you'd like to leave voters with, maybe how they can get in touch with you, and we'll start with you, Elizabeth, and then we'll go to Lydia.
Great, thanks. You know, one of the areas I wanted to speak briefly about is the governance within South Burlington has a committee structure, and we have probably over 120 volunteer citizens who serve on those committees and inform council of various topics, everything from dog parks to economic development to bike ped committee and so forth. And those are great conduits to hear back from constituents in areas I highly recommend. We do need to improve our representation, not only on council, but in these committees. So I highly recommend folks who have an interest to step up and serve in those. We are looking for candidates that have diverse backgrounds. From my standpoint, I look forward to continuing in my role. I've invested a solid year in getting grounded, and my family is here, and both my children were raised here, and my two granddaughters are here as well, going to Brick Marcott School. But I'm really interested in continuing to commit my time and energy to South Burlington and the city council, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you so much, Elizabeth. And Lydia, your final thoughts here?
Thank you, Elizabeth. My final thoughts are that I'm not running for South Burlington City Council because I don't have anything else better to do. I'm running because representation for people who look like me doesn't exist. I'm running because representation for tenants who pay rent, I mean, I want a tenants' union for South Burlington. We don't have representation in so many different ways, and I've been around for a minute. And the Peace and Justice Center is a phenomenal place for a lot of what we need. I have an allied group called Brooklyn Strong at the Peace and Justice Center, and Brooklyn Strong began because my granddaughter, Brooklyn, was diagnosed with chronic myeloid leukemia. And to God be the glory, she is 13 and in remission. She'll be 14 this year. I'm getting old. But also, I have connections in Burlington, South Burlington, in the state. But also, I have connections in Burlington, South Burlington, in the state, and I can help. And I just need the opportunity. And like I said, I want all 21,000 votes, representation in the, I mean, reparations in the form of votes, because I do want to win. I have already won by stepping up as the first Black woman to try to get on the South Burlington City Council. And this is my third run, okay? So I've been learning every year, and I'm ready, baby!
Lydia, thank you so much. Thank you both so much for being here, and thank you both for running. It's really, really.
Thank you, thank you.
It takes a lot of work, and I'm very.
You better know it.
Thank you both so much, and thank you for tuning into, thank you for tuning into Town Meeting TV's ongoing coverage of the Town Meeting Day 2025. You can find this and many more forums online at cctv.org/tmd2025. Thanks so much for watching.